Good evening. I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Boulder Valley School District Board of Education for Tuesday, May 12th, 2015, a regular meeting. Sandy, will you please call the roll?
Albright?
Here.
Bellville?
Here.
Benford?
Here.
Fuqua?
Here.
Marquess?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Reed.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to remind all who are here this evening, in our audience, as well as people who might be listening in, of the vision of, excuse me, I'm going to read the mission of the Boulder Valley School District. The mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. So we'll keep that in mind as we go through our board agenda tonight. See, the first item on our agenda tonight is the superintendent's report. Bruce, how are things going with the district?
Things are going really well, President Albright. Members of the board, welcome this evening. And I will start by just acknowledging that many of us just left the superintendent's honor roll celebration, and as we do twice a year, once in the mid-year, in the spring, recognize staff and community and students for all of their good work in our school district to make any difference for students. So thank you for attending and for our honorees, congratulations to them. So it's an evening we always look forward to, so a good way to start. I have a few other things I would like to just chat with you about. So you're well aware that we had an incident at Aspen Creek a couple of weeks ago, and an unfortunate situation where a student was injured in an accident, and so we're working through that. We communicated with the Aspen Creek community, Robin Fernandez, the principal and I did, last week around safety and security measures in that particular school, and then today we sent a message, which I sent you a copy of, if you were on email, to our entire school district community, both our parents and our staff. So I just want to acknowledge that I think Robin, Principal Fernandez, and her team did a great job. It was obviously a challenging day, and the good news, the student that was injured in the incident is doing fine and is back in school, and so, and then we'll work through the consequences for the other students. So anyway, thanks for your support with that, and thanks to the Aspen Creek community and the neighbors. One of the things that, with our safety and security team, is everybody's got their responsibilities, but one of the things that also happens in these situations is the staff and principals from the Broomfield community, in this case, came together and really helped at the site during the day, as well as supporting families and colleagues. So anyway, I just want to appreciate the good work of the Aspen Creek school community. Last Friday evening, afternoon actually, I was asked to address the graduates of the College of Education for CU, and so these were undergraduates and master's degree and doctorate graduates. And so Dr. Lori Shepherd, who's the dean of the college, asked me to address the group, and so it was a real honor to do so, and I had no problem promoting and affirming all the good work graduates in the College of Education, what they're doing now and beyond. And one of the special treats for me was a number of our own faculty were receiving graduate degrees, and so I was on the stage when they were honored for being hooded as their doctorate or receiving their master's. So anyway, great afternoon, and again, I just so much appreciate our partnership with the College of Education under Dean Shepherd's leadership and their good work partnering with us on a number of fronts. So in your agendas this evening, is a consent agenda, is the agreement with Peak-to-Peak Charter School with regard to the bond allocation for their campus development. We started work on that last October through the election, so finally have closure with that, so we seek your approval for that agreement, then also a ten-year contract renewal for Peak-to-Peak. You know, our very first contract with Peak-to-Peak Charter was in 1999, and so a number of members of our leadership team worked with their leadership team to work through the details of this contract, and so a lot of conversations, but overall a very constructive working relationship we maintained with Peak-to-Peak and our other charters, and so ten-year contract is really good news. What we know about Peak-to-Peak is they're a really stable, high-functioning charter school and a great member of the BVSD schools. So anyway, that's in your consent agenda this evening, so we'll look forward to your approval for that. We finished, we are finishing up finally, student assessment, and so the school year will end and we'll be done with student assessment. That's how we'll know we're done. So it's been a journey, and we've given you several reports on that, but I just want to mention and remind you that we are going to finalize this report that we gave to a first draft back in December, with sort of what we anticipated the cost and impact of student assessment would be. We shared that with you back in December, and we shared it with our legislators at the time, you recall, and what we committed to you is that we will update it once we actually administer the assessments. And so now that we have, and so that Leslie Stafford, our chief operations officer, is taking lead on that with the help of others. One of the things that we did under Jonathan Ding's leadership is reached out to sort of a selected group, randomly selected group of teachers and administrators, just to sort of give us a long-the-way report, sort of a narrative update of the kind of time and energy, so we can pull the hard data pretty quickly, but we'll have some description as well. So anyway, we'll provide you an update on that. I'm hoping that we'll have that to you in June, if we can get all the details pulled together. Certainly will be helpful for us as we plan for the future, and as you know, some legislative changes, which we'll talk about later, that, you know, will impact our work going forward. So real quickly, I just want to give you an update on KC Middle School. I committed to do that each time we gathered, and so I want to do that. I emailed to you a week or so ago that we, it was the week of the 27th of April, was the week we did the intensive air monitoring. We had that scheduled several times, ongoing air monitoring in the building, but during these episodes, these week episodes, when they're doing the symptom survey with the faculty, then we add a number of devices and have them in select locations, identified locations, and Dr. Van Dyke wanted that intensive air sampling in combination with the symptom survey administered to staff, and so that happened the week of the 27th, and Dr. Van Dyke will, once they've finished their analysis of the symptom survey, will get that back to us. Our other folks will have their eyes on the air quality testing during that week, and so again, looking for any, you know, different trends or patterns. So I don't have that tonight, but we will get it to you and make it available to the school community. We anticipate that in May and before the end of the school year is our plan. And then we will do this again later in May, and then we won't have those results before school's out, but we'll make them available on the public website once we have that. So there are five of these episodes, two this spring and three next year, and you've seen that schedule. So this was the first, and overall, I think it went well, and overall, we're getting really positive reports from the school community about the rebalancing and air quality of the school. So far, so good. We'll keep you posted on that. And in closing, I guess, unless there are questions that you'd like me to respond to, one of the contracts you approved a meeting or two ago was around our innovation consultants, so FNI Fielding, Nair International, is the group that we have contracted with under the principal leadership of Precaution Air, and so that's the team we're working with on the innovation design work for the bond, and so they're right now Phase One. And so we had a planning session with them at the end of April. Their team came in and worked with our cabinet-level administrators, and so it was a very productive day, kind of laying out our work activity. And so our plan is that if we can make all these schedules work, at your August board meeting after summer break, we hope Precaution himself will be here and members of his team. And so our plan right now is, and we'll, I think it's on your calendar, we'll get it on your calendar, you have a board meeting on the 11th of August, our first meeting after break, is that we do a 4:30 to 6:00 kind of timeframe, that we'd sort of have a presentation, conversation, work session with the board, and so you can see the work they're planning to do, and then we want to invite the bond oversight committee members to join us for that as well, and it'll be open to the community, so we'll do some invitations. So it'll be a chance to, for you to get kind of caught up on the early work that they're doing, and then we will give regular updates going forward. But it's, you know, we're going to have enough detail put together, we can describe it to you in August. So there are some reading materials. Some of you have copies of his book. We'll make copies available to all of you, so if you want some summer reading in July, we can make that available to you as well. So he's done really good work nationally and internationally, and we're looking forward to that working relationship in our school districts as well. So President Albright, that would conclude my report. I'd be glad to answer any questions from the board on these topics or any others. Thank you.
Okay, colleagues, any questions or comments? No? Well, keep working hard.
By golly, we are. It's May, it's kind of harvest season in the school business. We're busy, so everybody's really busy, but thanks. It's productive, busy.
Well, that's what it seems like. Every teacher and administrator that we've run into recently is just busy and wrapping up the end of the year and doing all the social and clementine events, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, tell them to hang in there.
Yeah, and they will. Thank you for your support.
Thank you for their work. Okay, the next item on our agenda is public hearing, and we have no one who is here this evening to s-
I don't think we have anybody here, Sandy, other than staff.
We had somebody who earlier indicated they might attend, but not here tonight. So the next item then on our agenda is board communication. So board members. Okay, anybody? Well, some of us, all of us maybe, I think, went to the retirement event last week, which was a terrific event and an opportunity for the district to thank our retiring employees. It's always hard to see people go, especially beloved teachers, staff members, custodians, administrators, but we wish them well and their retirement, and I hope that they'll continue to keep engaged in public education. But it was a real fun event, and it was good to have them come with their friends. I would just comment, as Bruce, I think is what you've done, is shifted the environment of that event around a bit, from being quite formal to more, I don't know, easy to chat and keep up with friends, and I like it.
No, thank you.
And it's nice, and I think people appreciated it and was nice. And maybe you could remind us who sponsored that event, because it was not paid for by BVSD, and I can't remember.
So the Boulder Schools Credit Union has historically been the sponsor, the primary, the prime sponsor, and so they donate all the funds needed for the evening, for the hors d'oeuvres, and then we have, we had Monarchs Jazz Band there, and yeah, and really no cost, and so it's really, as Lori described, it really become an informal gathering, a social gathering, and we've received very positive feedback on the new format, and I think mostly people want to come and see each other and have conversation and not let us get in the way with the program. So we do a really brief program, and Lori, thanks for your comments and Tina Muse's comments last week as well. So anyway, the credit union is our prime sponsor for that.
Yeah, well, thanks to them. It was great and a very nice event, and I think people enjoyed it, so thanks. And good luck to those guys, and don't forget us. We still need you, to those retirees. Okay, any other comments or anything else? Nope? Okay. The next item on our agenda is the legislative update of 2015.
All right, so I'll, if you want me to start, Lori, on this?
Yes, please.
All right, so I'll kind of hit the high points, and then again, if there are questions. So let me just start with school funding. So as was anticipated, I guess, pretty much towards the end, is that the legislature, through the School Finance Act, honored their commitment under Amendment 23, which means that they gave a 2.8% cost of living adjustment in the per pupil funding for all students in the districts, and then they also funded growth. And so obviously, we experienced that, revenue will experience that through the COLA, or Cost of Living Adjustment, of 2.8%, and then our growth of students will experience that as well, so the number of new students, which we've averaged, you know, around 1% in recent years. And then also, an additional 25 million, which isn't a lot, but it's something, and that will go towards kind of buying down the negative factors. That was above and beyond that amount that I just named. And so that will be distributed through the School Finance Act funding formula, so it comes to us just like the other money does. And then, then in the final hours of their work, they added $5 million to go towards at-risk students. So the way they define that in this legislation is any student who qualifies for free and reduced lunch, that proxy, they'll basically take the number of children across the state that qualify, and then on a per-district basis, will get so much per student, and it will come to us just as an allocation. So, you know, proportionally, we don't represent the rest of the state. We have a lower percentage overall of free and reduced compared to other districts. The average of the states around 40%, and we're around 20%. Clearly, some districts are much higher than that, and some are lower. So, but it's some money that comes to us, and it'll come, again, just as a general allocation. So the others, and then there's also a small school, rural school, allocation of $10 million that will go to school districts, I believe it was as defined by CDE, Colorado Department of Education, rural means 1,000 or fewer students. So the really small districts. And so again, a nice little bump for them going forward. We had advocated for both of those last two, the superintendent's coalition, you know, more funding through the negative factor for everyone, and also do what we can for at-risk youth and do what we can for our very smallest district, because they are particularly impacted by these shortage of funds. And so, you know, obviously, we were disappointed that we didn't realize what the governor had originally proposed in November. That would have been significantly more revenue for all school districts, $200 million more for the across the state. So that was a disappointment that that didn't ultimately work out. We did work with the delegation from, our lobbyist worked with Representative Hamner and Speaker of the House Hollinghorse to introduce an amendment to the School Finance Act that made its way through the House Appropriations Committee in the House and back over to the Senate after they'd approved it without the amendment. They approved it with the amendment. So what this amendment will do, and I will just give full credit to the BVSD team, because our lobbyist and Bill Sutter and Leslie Stafford and Deirdre Pelch, we met with them, we went down and met with them again and said, "Help us with this amendment," and so they drafted amendment and carried it for us, and so it will benefit all school districts. And so what it does is that the appropriation for schools and equalization formula made the assumption that the increased valuation would be 7.8%. So they have to use some number when they build the whole big general fund, and how much will come to schools for equalization. So what became really apparent to us towards the end of the session is that if you've looked at your property tax bill, you know what I'm about to say, is it's more than 7.8% increase, and if you're in Boulder County, it was closer to 20% increase. And so as we talked to our colleagues up and down the front range, it was really apparent what was going to happen is that overall, the assessed value was going to come in much higher than the 7.8%. In fact, the estimate, which is what it's going to be, because it's based on real numbers, is around 12%. So what that means is the money the state had planned to send to schools to equalize, so much would come out of Boulder Valley School District, so much out of St. Verane from local taxation. The state's obligation through the School Finance Act is to equalize that, so they have so much appropriated for each of the 178 school districts. Well, if each school district generates more money as a result of increased property value, then they need less from the state to equalize, and so we can't use that money above and beyond. It's just our share of the state equalization in Boulder Valley and every other school district goes up because the assessed valuation went up. So what that means, the money they had originally budgeted for school districts' equalization is not going to be needed. So that becomes a supplemental and could be used for other things. And so what this amendment does is a legislative declaration that says that money will be used for K-12 education. So when they get in January, or December, January, when these numbers are locked in as final, and that money is not needed in school districts, it's estimated to be around $70 million, that that'll be made available for K-12 education. So some of it will be to true up the system. So if they've estimated student growth to be a certain level, and it comes in somewhat more than that, which just happens every year, you know, they do their best, but, so they'll make that right, but there will still be significant money left. And so we, again, think it's going to be close to 70 million, and so that will be, that is ongoing funding and will be made available to school districts. And so as opposed to other state needs that might call for that money through supplemental. So we think that's good news. We were really pleased with legislative leadership to take it through, do the amendments, take it back to the Senate, so we had bipartisan support for this amendment to the School Finance Act, and so, you know, it was, came in late, but it's, so our plan would be, so I'll just finish that, we can go back to it if you'd like, but, so assuming what we believe to be true is going to happen, it will be between $1 and $2 million for BVSD. And so what we just will suggest to you as we work through the budgeting process is that we anticipate that as a part of building this budget, in that when the money actually flows mid-year, then what we'd like to do is visit with you about where we are with any staffing needs overall or school needs, and so we could see an appropriation internally to our, you know, staffing needs and then school allocations. Could be on a per-student basis, we would, you know, we'll see what the amount is and bring it to you at the time. But anyway, that's in our budget planning going forward, and we're, again, pleased that that's where we'll be. We were disappointed in the end that the hospital fee legislation did not pass. What that would have allowed is this hospital fee that you read quite a bit about would come out of the taper amount, and so that would free up some money, several hundred million dollars, that would have been available for public services, not just for education, but instead it was left in, and so that means the taper refunds will occur this year, and so our hope is in the next legislative session, they will address that again. Speaker Hollinghorse took a run at it at the very end to try to get bipartisan support, couldn't get both parties to agree to pass that, so at least it got it out, got public discussion on it, and we'll see where it goes. So that's kind of where we are with school finance, and so everything's on the CDU website, so we're building the budget accordingly. So that's kind of a done deal until this January allocation. On, yes?
Actually, you know, I'm wondering, if we could ask questions about that before you talk about the rest of legislative issues.
Sure, sure, yeah, because otherwise we'll wait in the assessment, there'll be more detail, so.
Okay.
If there are questions about that, I'd be glad to answer.
Any questions or comments?
Well, I just have a comment that I think you said you were disappointed. I'm going to say I'm very disappointed in the amount of money that we got overall for K-12. And I think that we probably gave it a pretty good shot to explain why it was needed and why it's appropriate, and, but in the end, to have the governor suggest $200 million and end up getting $25 million plus, a few of these additional monies that you've talked about, the rural money, the high-needs money, it's just pretty devastating, not only to us, but to other school districts. So it's, you know, what I would like to see is going back somehow to the drawing board and figuring out how we can work with legislators to understand what it is we experience. I don't think they understand it. I think it's easy to pass edicts and plans and recommendations, but they don't know how devastating it's been here and what the cuts have meant for us. So something I'd like to talk about, sort of an agenda-setting sort of idea, but it's just something as we think about the legislative wrap-up. And one thing I have noticed from a couple of organizations that keep track of what's going on with various issues about people or health or welfare kinds of issues, is that very, a few, some of them say nothing about education this year, and so it just didn't seem to be on the radar, except for these questions about reducing testing. And so I just found it interesting about that. But anyway, I was kind of getting away from the money. Anybody else have any comments on funding or any issues? Tina?
Just in the, in the school finance area, I know that the Millie Hamner suggestion to do a study on the formula didn't make it through.
Right.
Do you feel that it's going to come back next year?
Well, I anticipate, in talking to Representative Hamner, that's, and others, that that's an important issue. You know, it didn't have bipartisan support, and that's the reason they pulled it, is they thought it might blow the whole thing up, and so we actually supported them pulling it, because we didn't want to lose this other amendment. But we had come out in support, as we talked to Representative Hamner, that, you know, if, you know, we, as a district and as colleagues, we would support that if, you know, if we think it would have value. I just think that there's some worry about, you know, the state getting themselves into making a larger commitment, and so it's like they don't want to really have the conversation, I guess. But, so yes, I think to answer your question, I think it will come back, maybe it'll come back in a different way. I really wish our governor would engage in that conversation with Representative Hamner and, you know, maybe a bipartisan, at least a review of where we are. Again, I think I am also concerned with Lori said about, there just seemed a lack of either awareness or willingness to address it in this session, and if you read the Denver Post op-eds and columns the last week or so, I mean, they talked about winners and losers, and we were like on no list or we were on the loser list, but, you know, the point was, it just seemed to be as long as we, you know, it doesn't disrupt what we're doing, we're just going to leave it alone, and, you know, so we'll see how things turn out in the Supreme Court when Amendment 23 is before them, and hopefully we'll be successful there, so, but we need to keep working at it for sure. So I think, yes, it'll probably get another opportunity to visit about it. We also, when we met with Representative Hamner, we've also worked for a couple of years on this operational levy that we would like to have be available to school districts to take an operational levy to their community, which would be outside of our mill levy max on, that we're already at that maximum level. So, you know, she brought it up again, so I think that we have a bit of a receptive audience to this. We've been working with other school districts, so we didn't get it through this session, but we will keep working at that, because that would at least give us one more tool to at least go to our community and visit about it. It really would help us move some operational costs out of our ongoing general fund so that we can use more of the general fund dollars for instructional and educational purposes. So you're aware of that, and we want to continue to work on that.
Okay.
So I transitioned to student assessment real quick. So as you know, it was also pretty contentious, but it seemed like it was the issue around education through the most session. Lots of bills introduced, the House Bill 1202 Task Force Recommendations became a bill, and ultimately, the Democratic Party sort of got behind that as their, how they were going to carry that through, but clearly didn't have bipartisan support. So in the very end, I'm making this much shorter than it was, because it was pretty long and intensive, committee came together, you know, conference committee to reach agreement on this, and I will give credit to Representative Hamner, she kind of championed this. She's a retired superintendent out of Summit County, and so she knows the business, and really trying to find some compromise in here, and so I think there was probably general pleasure that it was finished and probably shared disappointment with what happened. So I think those who wanted less to be removed were disappointed that as much was taken out, and those who wanted more taken out of the testing package were probably disappointed. So we were probably in the latter group. We had actually hoped that they would have been a little more aggressive. But in the end, there were some changes, and I'll just really quickly, and we can, I sent you this morning, I think, the case legislative update, so buried in that multi-page document is this description, so we'll do more updates. We're still wading through some of the details, because that's what happens after legislative sessions. But for the most part, for grades three through nine, we will continue to give the PARC assessment for reading, writing, and mathematics. So really, that doesn't change very much at all. And then we'll administer the CMAS Science at each level, elementary, middle, and high, that's a federal requirement, so that's consistent with what we'd asked for. The social studies will be a random administration, so about a third of children in grades four and seven each year will take the social studies test, so, you know, theoretically, every third year. We, some, one of our students, some combination of our students would take the social studies test, so it's not totally gone, but it's much less. The high school senior exam is gone. It will not be administered again. So in grade nine, the PARC assessment, what they, if you read the news articles, you know what the intent was, that would satisfy the U.S. Department of Education's requirement under Elementary and Secondary Education Act as the high school assessment. Ninth grade isn't considered the high school assessment, it's always been 10th grade. That was with the TCAP and the CMAS, or the TCAP that we've most recently managed. So they're going to have to do a request to the U.S. Department of Education of variance to allow us to count the ninth grade PARC assessment to satisfy that federal requirement. So that's the plan. We'll see if the department approves it. So that's ninth grade. Now 10th grade will be the ACT Aspire, which is sort of a career, the focus is around career development, and so it's different than the ACT Junior Assessment. So this is not an assessment we've used. Some districts in Colorado have, and they speak highly of it, but it is a new assessment, and my disappointment is there was no public conversation around this. It was just laid in as the 10th grade assessment. And so it will be an optional assessment. Our students don't have to take it. So once we get closer to all this, we'll have to determine, does that mean we administer it to everyone and they can opt out, or we say, "We will administer it outside of school hours, and you can come take it if you want." So we just, we'll have to see what the interest level is, but we aren't required to administer it to all students who are sophomores, so that's a student optional test. Not optional for the district to offer it, but optional for the students to take it. ACT Junior Level, stay much the same, okay, just like we know that. And then the other kind of major area in this is the readiness assessment. We've selected TS Gold as our readiness assessment, which you're familiar with. Kim Bluman has reported that to you, so, and then the REED Act, the I-Ready Assessment. So as we tease out where we think that is, there is some overlap that occurs between the TS Gold readiness assessment and the early years I-Ready literacy assessment. So we'd already been given direction that you, if they take the, if they have the literacy assessment and the I-Ready, then they don't have to take that portion of the TS Gold, because they were kind of just doing the same thing twice, I mean, different tests. But, so they just put that in legislation, so there'll be some relief for the students, that they don't have to take a literacy exam, both in the TS Gold and also in the I-Ready. So a little relief there, which we already were anticipating. Then the other is that we are required to give the, we use the I-Ready for our literacy under the REED Act. Within the first 60 days of schools, we're required to administer that. If a student scores at proficient or higher, they don't have to take it again. If they are under grade level, then a part of the REED Act is that it has to be repeated administration for progress monitoring. So some relief by statute for students who are proficient readers, at least for the state's concern, that we don't have to administer it. We talked about this with our administrative team this morning. In our strategic priorities, one of the areas, as you recall, is early learning and literacy. So what you recall in that presentation that we provided for you is a common assessment, and literacy is an expectation for our district. So if it isn't I-Ready, then we'll most likely do something else. But we, we are not interested in not having a common assessment for literacy for all students. We actually do want a common assessment. So again, whether the I-Ready is that assessment or not, that's what we're using right now, because, you know, we have students who achieve at or above grade level. We don't want to, we want to measure their success as well and be able to stretch them and, you know, meet their needs. So, but I would just say the takeaway with all that is a little more flexibility with the literacy assessment and give more control local, which is what we had asked for. So that's a piece. Then the other thing that you saw probably in the news write-ups is that this notion of being able to use local district assessments to supplant or replace the state exam is going to be allowed for. Now, we don't know exactly what the threshold will be or the criteria. This came out of Douglas County a year ago, that they wanted the flexibility to do that and it was pretty well rejected, but that's how I think they got bipartisan agreement, they got it back in. And Douglas County is really ready to go with this. And so the other group that wanted this were the rural districts. They really wanted, there was a pilot project they had proposed where they could use an alternative assessment because just some of the issues around the size of their districts and administering them. So this will be one we watch really closely because as we work on common assessments and mathematics or other areas, we too might want to propose that our assessment meets our needs and if we can satisfy the state's need for some or all of our grade levels, that could be really good news for us. So, so that's a little silver lining in all this going forward. So that's mostly what was incorporated in all of this and, but I will tell you, we're still sorting out some of the details. So the takeaway, overall, a little less assessment, which particularly our high schools will be welcome news because of the impact it had on our scheduling and, now where are we with opt-out? So basically, we got to forgive on districts who had a high opt-out or low participation. So it won't affect our accreditation and, you know, there won't be a consequence. For schools in the state that are in this five-year countdown of, if they're in this, you know, improvement status, they have five years to get better or state takeover or something, we only have one school that's even in that group, Justice High School. All of our other schools, I mean, our schools are performing at a high level, but there are school districts that this is a big deal because it was sort of all messed up. They basically gave them another year as well. Senate Bill 191, the requirement under educator effectiveness that we use the state tests as a part of the evaluation, we were given a pass this year. Districts across the state will get a pass again next year. So they wouldn't commit to anything more than a year. All of these pieces were in other bills. So what they did when they cooked it all together is they said, all right, we're still going to do that, but only for a year. We'll do that, but just for one year. So what is unknown still is the impact of the low participation rate as school districts in the state, the 95% issue we talked about at the last meeting. We are not there as a state, we are not there as a school district. And so what will the Department of Ed do on that? My guess is the state of Colorado, through the Colorado Department of Education, the State Board of Education, when they submit this request for this new testing plan resulting from this legislation, they will ask for forgiveness around the participation rate. So I would say that's probably how they'll approach that because the Department of Ed made it really clear that they expected that to happen in this spring's administration and it didn't. So I would guess the state will ask for a year's forgiveness on that with the hope, the hope, that by next spring, we are back up there, which we'll see how that turns out. But that student assessment, maybe I'll pause there, there's one other area I would go to, Lori, but if there are questions around student assessment, I would do my best to respond.
Okay, student assessment. Tina?
Just kind of piggybacking on what you were saying, and it might be more of an agenda item, but just maybe meeting as a group at the end of this year or at the beginning of August to talk about whether we're going to push on assessment next year or whether we want to put all of our eggs in the money basket instead. I don't know how many asks we can make, but just kind of thinking about being strategic about what we lobby for and making sure we're prioritized. So it doesn't mean we can't do two things, but I think this funding thing is really big and maybe we can live with the assessment and work on the money for a while or, but maybe we should just talk about it at some point.
Yeah, I mean, I think our sense, Tina, is that this became so emotional, the assessment piece, and so divisive that it really, it was almost like it smothered the whole discussion around it, which some might have welcomed, actually, that there wasn't that discussion. But for the state, not just for our district, it was a huge distraction. But, but necessary too because we obviously had really strong feelings about it. So the other area I would just mention is the data privacy, student data privacy, because we've had quite a bit of conversation at the board table about that and our work sessions. And so Senate Bill 173, despite our effort and many others to find common ground on that, we did not achieve that. It died in the session, so there is no state direction at this time on the data privacy piece. So what we'll do, we sent you a note, I think a week ago, about work, we'll just go in-house and begin our work on policy and training, which we committed to do. We were just trying to anchor it around the state statute if it passed, but, you know, we'll go forward. And we continue to have conversation with Congressman Polis and his work at the federal level on congressional expectations around some of these same provisions, but really kind of on the macro scale for these large companies to kind of the good housekeeping seal around meeting certain standards for big companies that we might do business with. So, I mean, there'll be a lot of companies that won't, you know, be in that game because, but these are for the big players. And I think that actually good discussion's happening at the national level on this. And I think companies are beginning to understand the need for them to sort of get in line with this discussion. But anyway, we don't have much control over that either. I would just give our input, but we will work locally on our, so I think when we come back after our summer break, we can anticipate additional discussion on that. And one of the things that was suggested a week ago, I think, was what role will the community have in that? And when we did the work session in the fall, we talked about, as we draft some things, at least to reach out to DAC, District Accountability Committee and District Parent Council. So, you know, the question is, do we use our already existing groups that like to give us advice and should? Or is there a need for, I mean, we'll certainly, it'll all be public so people can come and participate, or we might want to have some public hearings also just, you know, to invite folks to come and comment as we develop policy and guidance for ourselves or certainly when we bring it to the board for consideration. And I would just say this is probably a dynamic process. So I think we should give it our best shot, do what we think is right, and then watch the industry change because it will, and, you know, make adjustments internally as we need to. But, I mean, the good news is, it's on the radar, we're absolutely paying attention to it. We're probably as well informed as any school district in the state, I would argue, because of Andrew Moore and Melissa Barber's work on this and others. So, you know, we're ready to go to work on it and we will. So, but those were kind of the big three we've talked about all along that are impactful. The student liability around the CASE in Littleton is obviously, that made its way through legislation, so we're, we'll work with our insurance companies and, you know, that's, I would just say, we are waiting for some guidance on that. The school attorneys have had discussion around it and I know Melissa's been involved in this, the state conversation as well, so we'll just see. I mean, today, we plan on keeping due business as usual, but we know that that piece of legislation will have implications for us as well. So I'll pause, stop there, President Albright, and if there are questions or additional comments, I know you guys are tracking this as close as I am. And again, I just want to express my appreciation to you as a board for supporting my involvement in this. I serve as co-chair of the CASE Colorado Association of School Executives Legislative Council, and so that means I go to meetings once a month and work with them and plan, but it also means frequent communication with the lobbyists, morning, noon, and night, to help guide their process. And our lobbyists, Tanya and Ernestine, work very closely with our association lobbyists, so it's sort of like we get to come through two doors on some of these issues and kind of double our power. So anyway, I appreciate your support with that and I know you guys are also actively involved in this work, members of the board. So I'd answer any questions, Lori, if there are any.
Okay. Shelley?
You know, I read the email you sent that described CASE's sort of position on the privacy bill.
Yes.
How they approached it. And I guess, you know, I've been following this somewhat and I'm not sure that I agree with CASE's position on it. You know, after reading the amendments they wanted to make, it seemed like it pretty much weakened the bill. I'm not saying that's CASE, that was CASE's amendment, but the amendment that was out there dramatically weakened the bill. So I guess I have a couple of questions. Before BVSD supports something like that, I think it would be good to have some board input into that because I certainly would not have supported that amendment and maybe others on the board would not have too. So how can we get more input before the administrative, administration goes forward and supports something like that? I'm actually happy they didn't pass it in the form that went forward, so.
So what, I mean, what was happening by the end is really trying to find any common ground. So some of the amendments and some of the, I mean, this isn't unique to this bill, this happens a lot, just really, I mean, because, well, ultimately, they didn't reach agreement. So the vendors of the industry became a pretty powerful force in this. And so, you know, it just probably wasn't going to happen unless some of the position was weakened and ultimately, it didn't happen. And so, you know, I think where ultimately CASE and other lobbyists landed on this was really trying to find some common ground, just to get some footing on this, but even that didn't work. And so, you know, it may never happen. I mean, when Congressman Polis talked about this, he feels there is a place for the federal government in this and a place for state government and a place for local policy. But, you know, these become partisan issues and so, and, you know, these companies have quite a bit of clout. And, and I think, you know, what we had as parents and activists that were on one side of this, really wanting more protection in companies, you know, trying to protect their interests by pushing back pretty hard on that and then ultimately, a compromise wasn't found. So I appreciate that, Shelley. I think that, you know, it's a dynamic process and by the end, some of the places that they, CASE or other associations land on these issues is really just trying to see, can we find any common ground here? And then ultimately, they were not able to. So, and as you know, any law can be amended later. So, you know, sometimes it's good just to get a foot in the door, get the bill in, get it passed, and that's a start. And then you work on changing it over time. Other times, you're just better to let it die. And, you know, another day and maybe it's, maybe it's easier next session or maybe it's impossible next session. But I hear what you're saying. And ultimately, associations, whether it's CASB or CASE or CEA, I mean, there is a process. I mean, ultimately, what guides CASE's position on this is really the legislative committee. And so any one district or lobbyist might be in a somewhat different place, but ultimately, Elizabeth Rosen, who's the lobbyist for CASE, you know, she reports to the legislative committee. And so then, having co-chaired that, they're not always in agreement on issues in this. This is one that there is some differing points of view. So I, you know, it'll be an interesting time to see if there is common ground that can be found here.
Well, I know BVSD's had influence in the past on some of this legislation. So I just feel like the board should have some input so that we can give you some guidance on how you might go to CASE and say, here's one district that has concerns about this and maybe you'd be able to influence them in some way. And so I think for, in order for us to take an intelligent stand on this, I think I suggested to you that we have some sort of working group. And I don't know whether that's a DAC working group or not. I guess it could be.
True.
But they would certainly have to get up to speed.
Right.
I know there's a couple that are, but I'm not sure the whole DAC is.
Yeah.
And so it might be, you know, there may be random people in this district who are up to speed is what I'm trying to say. And if we could get them together in some sort of working group. And I think we should be prepared for the next time this comes around. So what would need to happen for us to do that?
Yeah.
So I think, well, one thing is, we do have legislative liaisons who are following legis, who can follow legislation and make a quicker decision. Some of these decisions have to be made like almost on the spot when things, when things happen quickly in the legislature. So, you know, how we can, I mean, we can have a long-term discussion about the values of privacy and I think that would be fine, in my opinion, it would be fine for DAC or DPC to be engaged in that, but in terms of a lobbying effort, you almost have to do it quicker.
Well, this is, this has been in front of the legislature for how long now? Like, I think the first time it started to come up was a couple of years ago. So it's not like, it's not like, I mean, this is a situation where I think we need to think very thoughtfully about what our position is, not make a random decision at the last minute. And I haven't heard anything from our liaisons about discussing with the board about what position we should take on this. So I feel like maybe that's something that is not, you know, maybe the most functional way to deal with it is that the liaisons do that without any discussion with the board. So.
Tina?
Yeah, and one thing, one question I have in this with the particular, the student privacy policy, is I thought it was great that we have our own policy that emerged and that you sent and we'll hold ourselves to that policy. Why would we compromise because with the legislature on that policy? I mean, how much does it affect us, what the state says? Because we have our own policy and we'll select our own vendors. I, I'm thinking there are probably some vendors that we have to use, like iReady, for instance. But if we have our own policy, we may not be, have a motivation to compromise because we don't really have to.
Right.
And, I mean, that might be the discussion really, is do we need to compromise on this or is it just something that we're going to do our own thing and hope that the legislature follows us on that topic?
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, it's, I mean, it's a combination of both. I mean, there isn't any reason a local school district, including ours, couldn't be more restrictive or, I mean, that certainly, I think the advantage of the state and national conversation on this is that they can more likely influence the playing field than we can. So if we just don't use a vendor, but pretty soon, if there's no vendors that will play the way we want to play because they don't have to, then we can have really strict criteria. We just can't get anybody to work with us. Whereas if it happens in Congress and they, the only way you get, to get to play is to meet these standards, well, then that's big business. And so they're more likely, we're probably not going to influence Google. I mean, little BVSD's probably not going to influence Google. But national legislation will likely influence Google because it could cause them not to have any business. And so I think it's all kind of perspective. And so I think our interest at the state level was one to get protections for those who, you know, might not be players in this, but also to probably influence the industry a little bit, those who offer. So if we, if we set a standard as a state that all student information systems would have to match, and then we could be more restrictive in that, but at least all systems would at least meet that standard. Whereas if there is no state expectation around that, then I think it's just a different playing field. So you're right, we certainly, and I think the discussion around our own policy on this and our belief around this, to Shelley's point, would help us influence our position on future legislation, national or state. I think that all makes sense. So I actually think we probably don't need to do something more than what we have planned to do right now. I think we should work through what we planned to do, what was in our communicate last week of working on our policy and training piece. I think that will help us firm up our shared belief around that. And then, then when legislation, if it's introduced next session, we can say, well, how does that compare to there? And then, you know, maybe we lobby hard on it or maybe we step back from it and just say, you know, it's not what we want at all, so we're not going to, you know, we don't need to play. But I think we'll know better this fall as we work through some of our own issues. And right now, you know, we think we can do business and we think these contracts that we're going to have rewritten will give us the protection that we need or are already in place. You know, I think the dynamic around less formal arrangements and access to software that are used in classrooms or by parents is where, you know, there's just less management around that or control. So that's probably the area that, you know, we still have the, because that's a training issue. The teachers and principals are conscious of what's being used in their building and what privacy protection they have or don't have with that. So, which we shared with you in the fall, we'll come back to that.
So Bruce, where are we on updating our contracts?
So the communication we sent out last week indicated that we are communicating with the vendors. And so when they are renewed, there's a criteria that they need to satisfy. And so it's in process.
And are they renewed annually or how, like, there's no 10-year agreements, are there?
We do not have the, not multi-year agreements. So, and then if, if we are in a position with a vendor that, you know, that we're uncomfortable with, obviously, there are ways we can terminate the agreement or set new, I mean, so, but for the most part, we're comfortable with where we are because we have our own protections around that, but we are working through those. So, yeah, they're, they're year-to-year contracts. So we're working through those. Those are the bigger vendors, those are our bigger softwares. Again, the ones that are more incidental usages, we don't have agreements with them. So that's an education piece. And there might be some that are just on the no list, don't use these vendors at all, and there are some on there. And so some of that we can block and, you know, but there are others that are okay to use, but with some understandings of how they're used, and that's more of a training issue. And they change daily, you know, so it's, it's our staff staying on top of that.
So how would you recommend that we make this decision about whether this is a separate group or a DAC?
So we're looking at JFCO's work, we followed up on that. And so I just need to, we've, I've got Melissa and Andrew working on this. I think what, what I've asked them to do is sort of put our action steps together, steps that we're going to take, say, the next 60 to 90 days, and then just see, you know, next 60 to 90 days. And then just see, you know, does it make sense to form a group to do that? Or, you know, can we do it with staff and then find different ways? I mean, obviously, summertime's not a great time to just get anything started. But I, you know, I think, we'll take a look at that, probably come back to the board in a September work session with a plan of action. And then, if we feel we can do it with existing groups, then we might propose that to you. But I do think, there isn't, we don't have any question that there's need and value to get parents and staff eyes on this and get their input beyond just our immediate staff. I think the question is just the best way to do it so it doesn't become cumbersome or too cumbersome.
Thanks.
So, I think we're in a good place as a district. We're just, you know, we know we've got work at the state and the national level to do on this.
Okay, on privacy. Anything else on testing or privacy question or other legislation? Okay.
We'll keep you posted as we get more information.
All right. Sounds great. Thanks. All right. The next item on our agenda is our consent grouping, and I'll read them. 7.1 Personnel Items, 7.2 Approval of Minutes, April 28, 2015 Special Meeting, 7.3 Approval of Minutes, April 20, 2015 Regular Meeting, 7.4 Acceptance of Donation, Flatiron Elementary, 7.5 2015-16 Benefits Approval, 7.6 Approval of Policy IKE, 7.7 Award of Contract for Architectural and Engineering Services for Bond Projects for Phase One, 7.8 Colorado Preschool Program, RFP Award for Community Child Care Centers, 7.9 Peak-to-Peak Charter School Contract, 7.10 Peak-to-Peak Bond Agreement, 7.11 Ratification of Negotiated Agreement between the Boulder Valley School District and the Boulder Valley Education Association, 7.12 Grant, Peak-to-Peak Charter School from the School Health Professional Grant, Colorado Department of Education, 7.13, or 7.13 School Health Services, School Health Professional Grant, Colorado Department of Education. Do I have a motion to approve? Sam, is there a second? Tina? Okay, board members, are there any items that anyone would like to pull? Seeing no items to be pulled. Are there any items that board members have questions on that you would like to talk about? Tina?
I had a question about 7.8 about the preschool program.
Preschool.
And I was just wondering how, so, one was a follow-up to the questions I sent to you by email. And a community member had emailed me an article about research about the distribution of kids that are in poverty and not in poverty in a preschool classroom. And I was just wondering, is that a consideration when you go through the RFP process, is looking at the balance, the diversity of kids in a classroom? Is that part of that process? I didn't see it explicitly, but I know there's not, you know, not everything is detailed to that level.
You know, I think to that point, Tina, I think, obviously, the, the settings we can influence most are those that we run. And, and I think in Kim's write-up that she prepared for you was that we do this balance piece with, you know, tuition and the children in poverty and children with special education needs. So, that we can influence. I think that, you know, we would encourage similar settings, but the special education's all going to be in our house for the most part, which is what she explained and the reason why for that. You know, and I do think most of the vendors we work with that compete or want these Colorado preschool projects, slots or allocations, do have a heterogeneous environment, but clearly, they also have to generate enough tuition. What we know is the CPP allocation is not adequate for us or for vendors. And so, you know, I think for the most part, they are diverse, but it is not a requirement. I mean, mostly, it is around a standard of quality. That is the requirement that we have a responsibility to make sure, not only for our own children, but for vendors. And so, you noticed from the list and the comment that Kim responded back, that for the most part, these are vendors year after year one dropped out. So, these are folks that we have a relationship with and, and we're pleased with the quality of work that they do. And there is diversity, but probably not to the degree we have in our own classrooms just because of the business model and the other funding that's available.
And in the bilingual, we have a couple bilingual classrooms. Are those bilitered or bilingual? Are they mixed classrooms? Or are they separating them for part of the day?
Sandy, do you know if they're, I don't know that I know the answer to that. We can find that out. I just not, I'm not sure. But we can check with Kim or Teresa and find out.
Okay. And then, my last question was just, I didn't know if this, what we're talking about, this RFP relates to the policy BDFC. And that is the preschool council policy and where it states that there's a, there's an annual, that the preschool council recommends to the board a plan for the annual evaluation of the preschool program. And I'm assuming that does not happen annually, but I was wondering if you could clarify that?
So, the standards are established. They obviously can be altered over time. Mostly what dictates this process, that this agree, this that's on the agenda, is a state requirement that we, and appropriate, we believe, that we allow opportunity for other vendors to participate in the allocation of these funds. The, the standards that are established for our own preschools and for those that these go to are really controlled by the state because they have quality standards that preschool providers or vendors have to meet in order to even compete for this. And so, you know, it's our job as the one who runs the, the project and then makes a recommendation of the allocation. They have to meet those standards. But I would say that council oversees the standards because we have to be compliant with the state in order to get the funds. And there's areas around special education. We, there aren't any of those standards that we don't believe are appropriate. And so, but I think that council would give oversight to those standards ongoing, and they are in compliance with the state requirement for the allocation of the CPP slot. So, it's in partnership with the state because that's where the money's coming from.
So, is there, for the evaluation piece, then, the board doesn't need to do anything? Or, because it's the, this recommendation part is in the same paragraph is where they talk about the two-year process to look at alternative providers to provide preschool? So, so, I don't know if that needs to be, I don't know if there's anything the board's supposed to be doing or looking at.
I think only if they probably change. I mean, the reality is, when Kim presented in our work session, it's probably almost a year ago now, around our early childhood education program, and she talked about the quality standards that are a part of our preschools, they comply with that. So, I mean, if, if you want, we, I mean, we obviously can share those with you or we can bring back. But I think it would only be necessary if there's, you know, a proposed change that we'd bring to the board. But.
We might just want to clarify the policy then, though.
Yeah.
Because then it's just confusing if you read through it. I feel like, I'm like, oh, we have to look at the annual evaluation and, you know, and it's.
I'm not aware that we've ever done that.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
But we can follow up with Kim.
Okay.
Thank you. Good questions on preschool. Thanks for looking deep into it. Anyone else? Any other comments? Okay, Shelley?
No. I have a couple of questions. Just, does it matter which ones?
No.
Okay. On Policy IKE?
Yes.
Just had a question about the appeal process again. I note that, I saw your note that retention decisions around the REED Act rest with the superintendent. And I'm just wondering, has, has there ever been a situation where a parent has appealed a retention decision that was not related to, you know, K through three or REED Act or?
Not in my tenure. I mean, I think mostly it's been at the school level. So, I mean, if your question is, has it made it to my office?
Yeah.
Or to, you know, or consideration of the board, not, not in my tenure. I mean, mostly, we're dealing with a couple right now. Mostly, these are just working with families. And as you can imagine, the setting, it's not, I mean, these children aren't necessarily on an individual education plan, but they might be. And so, there might be a team already that would be dealing with this. But if it's not a child in special education, but just a consideration of whether to promote or not, then, you know, the parents are convened, the staff convened, the literacy. I mean, mostly, these are dealt with at the school level. And occasionally, you know, kicks up to the executive director or to the assistant superintendent just to give guidance. The one change that we'll make on this going forward is being more consistent in the decisions around retention will all be reviewed by the assistant superintendent. Mostly, it's elementary, but Mark Schaefer's assistant superintendent for secondary, occasionally, the secondary is level. But, so, we are going to want the principals to say, you know, this is where we are so that if there is an appeal, they would go there. But it'll be the assistant superintendent that basically approves all retentions and, and, you know, not set in on all those meetings, obviously, but make sure that, because, well, we want to be consistent in our interpretation of the criteria that's being applied. So, if you go to one elementary school, the criteria, I mean, the children are all different. The settings are all different. But we want to be consistent in our criteria of application. We want to be sure that we've really exhausted many other strategies before we get to this decision of whether to retain a child at a grade level or not. So, we just want to make sure we're consistent with that. And we think we have some work to do with that. And this policy actually will help us get there. So, but no, I'm not aware of any that have been appealed up.
So, is, I mean, is there any reason that they wouldn't follow the typical complaint policy if they're not part of the REED Act consideration? I mean, I, I just don't understand why it's different.
So, we have a number of administrative policies, which is my note back this afternoon, that we, that don't go through the appeal process.
Oh, I know. I'm just wondering, like, is there a specific reason why this one doesn't or why another one doesn't?
Our practice in the district's been, issues that can be handled at the administrative level should just stay at the administrative level. That an expulsion, appeal, or, you know, a termination of employee clearly are, you know, board-level decisions. I think just the history in this district is to try to keep the appeal process related to, you know, where the most appropriate level is. That, you know, really, we should be able to get this resolved before it ever makes its way to the superintendent's office.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll just tell you philosophically where I'm at with this, which will be consistently applied, is that ultimately, parents need to be with us on this. Whether we promote or retain, my experience in 37 years is that if the family isn't with us, it won't matter what we do. So, you know, so, we'll work with the families on this. And, you know, sometimes they need some support and reinforcement as well. And that's another issue that we need to work on. But I mean, this is an example, and it's really true. You don't have expulsions either because we do deferred expulsions in this district. So, we handle it at the administrative level. Doesn't mean we don't deal with it, and we do. But for the most part, there are administrative procedures that address the students' needs at lower levels in the organization.
Yeah. I mean, I think this, I can't imagine that it would get to the point where the board would have to intervene in something like that. But I guess what it brought up for me was, how do we make those decisions about which ones come to the board and which ones don't? I don't, I don't know what that process is or.
Well, I think, again, I think if it's a removal of a student from the system or a loss of employment, those are clearly large, life-altering kinds of events for students or staff. So, I mean, those do make it through there. Or things that don't have a natural pathway, and those could be just regular public complaints. We think by creating administrative procedures that have pathways, have protocols, that those kinds of things.
So, unusual kind of events?
Yeah, unusual kinds of things. Or that we just don't have a protocol to deal with. But clearly, student retention, this policy, we absolutely have protocol in place. And, I mean, most of the attention's going to occur first in the classroom level, then the school level, then if it gets out of the school, I mean, we're going to be, I mean, we're working on a couple right now that we're very involved in. I mean, again, trying to find what's in the child's best interest.
Okay, just a quick question on the BVEA agreement under the, in the compensation section. I think it's E1 dot, E11. Can you describe how the process is going to work for reopening negotiations if we need to discuss, you know, other priority, you know, programs versus COLA? Because it's in there that we will, we can do that before April 1st. But I'm wondering, is that, how, how, how would we signal that? Or where is that discussion going to come up? Does that need to be a board motion? Is that going to come up in budget discussions well before April 1st? Or will the district come to us at some point and say, April 1st is coming? Do you want to look at this? Or, like, how will that come up before us next year? E11, thank you.
So, in general, Shelley, I think, since we're talking kind of generalities, what I would think that if there isn't a specific event, an episode that triggers something, then I think it would be that if we get into conversations at the board level, or the administrative level, or the association level, that there's some aspect of the contract that's prohibiting us from doing something we want to do or causing us to do something that we've become uncomfortable with. I think it could start in any of those places. I mean, I probably wouldn't, well, I wouldn't initiate opening the contract on your behalf without your support. So, it could be that I would bring something to you and say, you know, I'm going to suggest that we initiate that and reopen. And again, it could be finance or it could be something else. As the board members, you might say, yeah, I'm aware of this. I'd like to talk about it. I want to give the superintendent direction to go to the association. So, I think that's how it could happen. I mean, the association could do the same, that they could, you know, become uncomfortable with an aspect of it. And so, the team that meets monthly, we just met this afternoon, in fact, for 90 minutes, is the labor management team. So, I'd like to think what has happened in the past, if there are issues that arise, the question is, can we resolve problems, whether it's coming from our shop or from the association, within the contract? Or is there flexibility to do that? And if there isn't, I mean, I can just say, in the years I've been here, we haven't had to open the contract to do it. I mean, mostly, there have been provisions that we can do it within, there's probably generally more flexibility in the contract than people think when we really get into it. Now, clearly, if it's a, an adjustment in the compensation or a benefit that's going to connect the, affect the well-being or the welfare of the employees, then that's a bigger deal. And whether it's on the association's side or the board. But I probably wouldn't initiate that without your support. But clearly, if there were areas that you had concern about, you know, I would ask you to bring it to my attention. I could investigate it. And if I'd say, really, the only way we can address that is if we reopen the contract, I'd probably recommend a motion on the board to follow this provision. I, I think that's what you would want, and that's what I would want before I approach the association. And again, I would think, I don't want to speak to Dr. Tina Mu's governance structure within the association. I know they have an executive committee. So, I would guess she would take direction from her executive committee in the event that they found something that they felt they needed to reopen the contract. So, I, I mean, I don't think we have a formal protocol for that, but I think that either governing board would probably give direction to the executive to do it or to request it. And as you know, either party can request it, and it will happen. It doesn't take agreement between the two parties. Either party can initiate that.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. I just, when I read it, it just felt like it was kind of evergreen language when I think what we discussed in the meeting was that every year we were going to look at this.
Yeah, I think, so, we are formally going to pause in September of, October of 16, October of 16, to, to address, when we ended the conversation that day, or quit talking about that down, if we ended it, around the evergreen piece, what we said, let's take a look in the fall of 16 and see where we are. Do we want to just execute the full three years of this agreement? Or do we want to, do we want to go to this language? Because, you know, we looked at draft language that would make it evergreen, and we decided, let's not do that yet. Let's see where we are. And I think, we just visited this afternoon that there will be some analysis that we want to do, actually with the association, so that when we get to that fall of 16, Tina, you sent a note a month ago now, I suppose, about doing some projected analysis. So, we're working on what that might look like. Visited with the association today about that. I mean, we have interest in having this be a shared conversation. And so, we're gaining information together. But that, that we will do more formally, where we will actually not require a reopen, or we'll pause and see where we are. And really, if we decide we don't know enough or we're not, we'll just execute the three years as agreed upon. And then, we can visit that again the next time it's open if we don't make a change at that time. And again, the language you referred to earlier, Shelley, it can be reopened anytime.
Yeah.
We don't have to wait till fall of 16 if we don't want to.
Right. Okay. So, just one other quick question about the school health services grants. So, I see that these are one-year grants in both cases.
Yes.
And that we have a 10% in-kind or, Peak-to-Peak has to pay 10%, right? But we have an in-kind agreement. So, again, I think I've asked these kinds of questions before about these grants. This is a one-year grant. It's $280,000, the one for Arapahoe and Nederlin.
Yep.
So, when it expires, we're most likely going to continue at that point. Is there any reason we would not continue something like this? Once we've given a school a couple of nurses and a counselor, are we going to take those back after a year?
Yes, we have. And we just did, actually. We just, you know, reduced counseling services for Counselor Core Grant. I mean, if we can't sustain it, well, there's two, more than two issues. I mean, I don't like this. I mean, if it's really high quality and making the difference we want, and it becomes a priority, then we try to figure out in the budget process where to get the money to do it. But then, it becomes kind of a new budget proposal because if it's great, we ought to figure out how to do it. Now, if, if we don't have the resources, I mean, we, these are limited-term contracts generally we put folks on, or they take the assignment knowing they'll go back. So, yes, we do unwind them. And I think that part, one, while it lasts, it provides a service. Some of them are developmental, so they can have lasting impact even after the resource is gone. But, yeah, I mean, we do unwind them because, so that's the downside of having short-term grants. I mean, if it's a developmental grant where you're doing planning and, you know, anticipating and launches something else, then, but if it's really a direct service and there aren't resources available, we will unplug it.
Yeah, because it seems like you're just making, in advance, you're making a priority budget decision without laying it up against other priorities.
Right. So, if it, well, we'd have to compete against other priorities in the year we build the budget. If we're trying to shoehorn it back in, then it's going to compete with everything else. I mean, a school, I mean, these aren't probably good examples of that. But I mean, schools could make those vegetarian priorities with their own staffing allocation if they said, all right, we probably can't do a full-time whatever nurse or whatever, but we are going to take some of our staffing, and we're going to at least maintain some of that program. So, you know, our effort in doing these is, one, take advantage of resources that are available, and also try some interventions to see if they're effective. And if they are, then, you know, it might become a budget priority for us.
So, I assume these, these contracts come with some sort of requirement? I mean, there's a written contract for this?
An agreement, yes, as a part of the application.
Yeah. I, I would like to see the agreement for these health contracts, if you don't mind.
So, Sandy, we can follow up. I think B probably would have those available, I'm assuming. These would be a part, I think it's the, probably the applications we submit.
Thanks. That's it. Thank you, Shelley. Anyone else? Anyone on the phone? Sam? Tom? Any other comments? Well, I just have a comment on the, on the contract. I was glad to participate in that ratification process, and I'm pleased that we can offer this COLA to our teaching staff, BVEA membership. And we'll talk about the rest of the groups coming forward here, the rest of May and June, I'm sure. Yep. It's, you know, I think the most important, one of the most important aspects of our district is that we have good teachers in our classroom. And I'm glad to be able to pay them, our teaching staff, a little bit more. I wish we were paying more. I wish we had more money. But it's, it's the same fight. So, that's my comment on the, on the, on the agreement. Shelley, I have a, I have a comment just about your, your thoughts about soft money and grant money. I, I don't like it either. I mean, I don't think it's a way to run a business is on soft money annually. My, you know, lots of science people, that's how they operate. And it's not good. It's always unstable and uncertain about the future going forward. But unfortunately, the way I look at it, this is what a lack of funding has put us into, is that we're ending up doing, looking for money wherever we can get it, whether it's from the state, whether it's from federal government, whether it's from private organizations. You know, all of our schools give us grant money, or not all, but many, most, maybe even all. A lot of them do. money, um, or not all, but many, most, prob, maybe even all. A, a lot of them do, and, um, it's painful. I don't like it either. But, but I think.
Well, it's never free. It's never really free. There's something, that's why I want to see the contract.
Yeah, no, I think it's, no, a contract's fine, and I think it's good to see what the expectations are. But I'm just saying, um, having counselors and health people in, in health rooms is real important. Um, and I've volunteered in a few and worked in a few, and done plenty counseling about plenty of issues with health issues, and, um, you know, in a professional capacity, and, and I, and I know how important it is. I don't like it that it's one year. I mean, I wish it were ongoing funds, but it's what we've got, so, um, it's better than nothing. So, we'll go for that. All right. Any other comments? Uh, okay, uh, then, Sandy, will you please call the roll?
Albright?
Yes.
Belville?
Yes.
Benford?
Yes.
Fuqua?
Yes.
Marques?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is study items and, and agenda setting. Are there any topics anyone would like to talk about, or bring up in, uh, near future? Tina?
Well, just since we're in agenda setting, I'd like to bring up the legislative priorities. I think we talked about a couple in the legislative update, so just to put that, um, maybe get a placeholder for that.
Okay, good. Sandy, will you help us remember that, please? And, and, yeah, well, and we're going to talk about agenda setting. I mean, that's actually one of the things that we've been talking about, is how to do that a little bit better, just to make sure that we get the topics written well and, um, in a document form. And so, Sandy's and Bruce have prepared some information on that, so, but, I, because I just don't want it to drop, get, get sort of lost somehow. Um, okay, uh, one of the things I would like to talk about in the, um, maybe in June, is, um, this idea about term limits for school board members, and whether, um, they might be extended or eliminated. So, it's something that I would like to pursue a little bit and talk about, and, um, if we could put it on the agenda for, uh, June or August, that'd be good. I'd be happy to talk about it with people separately as well. Anyone else? Tom? Sam? Okay. Well, seeing no other conversation, we're having a short meeting. Um, Jenny, it was nice to have you on the board meeting with us. Thank you. Shelley?
Um, did we want to discuss with the board the idea about a different way of setting agendas now? I mean, because we had discussed about, if you want something on the agenda, it would be nice if people flushed out their ideas a little better, other than giving us four or five words to go on in agenda setting, because it doesn't give the district much, enough guidance in terms of what we all want. So, I think Bruce suggested that we follow some sort of format. Bruce, could you send that to us, what that might look like, a form?
After our agenda setting meeting. Leslie, Sandy and Leslie Stafford and I worked on a template, and so, I think we have, or we'll send it to the two of you because you were involved in the conversation. Uh, and so, what we're envisioning, and so you can give us some feedback on that. Then, uh, then we'll take it to the full board in draft form. But the idea is that we, we've had this protocol for requests for information, which we've sort of maybe gotten out of the habit of using, and myself included, and then, um, this agenda setting, what Shelley just said. And so, what, what we envision is at least considering a, a new format that would be for either. And so, as a board member, you would say, you know, I want to talk about, um, whatever. And, um, this is something, is, I just, is information item is fine, or I'd like it to have it be on the board agenda. And this is some brief description of what I've got in, I'm thinking, and what would be the purpose of that. So, then we would have something, I'm, so it's a little bit of homework. Then we would have something we could take to just the very form itself, to agenda setting. And then Sandy's created, uh, behind it, a format that, you know, through Google Forms, that would allow that item to be captured, like a line item in a spreadsheet. And then, we can, um, say, all right, we're going to do it, uh, as an RFI or an information. Let's get it by June 15th, and so we put, and then we put the delivery date. It'll be put up on board docs, so kind of a management system that would accompany that. And then, if it's scheduled as a work session or a study item, then we would denote that and what day it'll be scheduled. Or, if the decision is that, um, the, uh, leadership of the board says, interesting, I'm glad that board member's interested in that. We're not particularly interested in it, we'll let them know we're not going to bring it forward, or we're not going to ask the, so, um, so we, we'll, um, some input, and so we want you to give us some feedback on it, and then we'll run it by the full board, and our hope is that we can, you know, get that figured out here in May and June, and at least when we start our new, um, board year, uh, for the new academic year, and we'll test drive it and see how it works. We're trying not to make it too burdensome, but we also know that we need a little something more, probably, so both the administration knows what exactly we're talking about. And then we can always follow back up. If Sam puts something in, I, you know, I can say, Sandy, why don't you send that back to Sam and have him elaborate a bit more, or I'm not sure he's talking about this, or he's talking about that. So, you know, it might be an interactive process to make sure that when we bring it to the leadership of the board in agenda setting, we have something that, um, and you might say, well, why don't you check with the full board to see if, what their thoughts are? Do they want to take an evening and spend on that? So, we could send it back out to the full board and say, give Sandy some feedback, whether we should schedule a 90-minute work session on this or not. So, we'll just try to figure out how to make it useful, mostly useful is what we want, and functional, not a burden. But, um, we've, we've lost a few things, or we weren't sure what to do with a few things this year, and so we just felt like we needed, to Shelley's point, to tease out a little bit more information. So, we'll see what you think, and we'll test drive it, okay? So, yeah, we're, we're following up on that, Shelley.
So, Tina, you may be the first person to, to write some, you could be our test case.
Actually, Shelley's working on one. We might give Shelley one to do.
Good. Okay. Any other comments or suggestions or anything? Okay, well, then, this board is adjourned. Thank you.